Yeah, I yelled out, yeah.
Michael.
Listen, I'm alive.
Sorry. Is it five? Yes, 5:01.
Alright, we're still in favor.
Okay. This is from Jerome Davis, so I think he's asking when to come and speak. I'm gonna go up, is alright? Here's the big rubber band.
BRB. Thank you. Are we prepared? Then I would, uh... I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss a matter of litigation with the Clotwick City Retirees Association, and a matter of litigation regarding to taxes with CDPH. Moved by Councilor O'Connell, second by Councilor Kretser. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will be back as soon as we can, folks.
So I put all my stuff in the garage. I keep this stuff just underneath all that stuff.
Mr. Insol, how are you today? He's the only one that have a mic to message, yes, that I can just call from the car. You have to be a really good reporter. Right, and you put it in for me here to, um, over the day. That it was about being more than a three hour, like it wasn't, um, what you're having, like it wasn't in fact, it was.
Need to dispatch some files. There's no, there's no, because they're silent. I'm fixing. I'm looking at, um, towards the east. Right outside my, right outside my space. Jeffrey, sorry. Well, that's where I am. It has to be on my space. The only question I got is like, you know where there's an egg? You know where, you know where you have to be, um? So the only thing I'm thinking about is the twin. One piece of water on the egg, and then one piece on the side. It's not two sides, two separate sides. The studio, they're right, and so it's like, if you're checking, right? Like the angle, the shape open, you'll be able to see what's happening. Something like you're driving or anything, you can look up there and see what's going on. Can't, oh, it's just got to be solid. You all respect her pretty well. But really don't think it's all fair.
Don't butcher a song.
My son was actually going to work. That's not basically standing down on the other block. I gotta, I gotta measure. It's literally going to be something like, uh, white lettering. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and that'll be just like that. It'll be, um, however they're gonna rub it. The letters are probably gonna be something like that. Quarter inch maybe? So, so, so lighted. If there was something like that, what would it be? Somebody would have done their thing, who'd have done their thing to give that? If he was, he got his side first. In the parking lot behind the, um, trailer park. Now, they would have started, like, right, right in the middle.
How would you even know though?
Um, but I, we are, this is really, this is getting a lot of the store. I'm not sure if you drive, well, I'm not sure.
Fifty, sorry. Fifty square meters. I like the neighborhood here. This is like sixteen by three feet. So six times three, if I use the pool for the side.
You were very modest. Yes.
So I forgot, I didn't remember where I used to get my, uh, pierce. So it's, um, hundred forty-seven inches of my course. Well, just a little.
Hi Sylvia. Uh, since we have two minutes, I don't see us doing anything but signing bills.
That's funny, man, that's funny.
There, now it's time. Y'all join me to place the flag. Mike Brody's obviously not on the same time as Verizon Riley.
Council Kelly.
Here.
Council Dowell.
Here.
Council Kessler.
Here.
His office moved by Council, uh, O'Connell, second by Council, uh, Armstrong.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carry.
His office pay those areas, departments, city, passport, for the week's ending September fourteen, two thousand sixteen, amount four hundred eight six thousand eight hundred seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents, December twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. The amount one hundred eleven thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents are authorized on the mayor's city clerk. Everybody in power can direct sign Mark Strong and City Chamberlain with campaign for...
Moved by Council Armstrong, second by Council Kessler. Discussion. Local call. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
His office informed, as I said, hereby ordered receipt, based on final and public records, in City Clerk's office.
Moved by Council Armstrong, second by Council Kessler. Discussion. Local call. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
His office informed, as I said, hereby ordered receipt, based on final and public records, in City Clerk's office.
Moved by Council Dowell, second by Council Kelly. Discussion.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we had, uh, the vendor invoice list of past, uh, this year tonight. Uh, can I ask, is this the place to ask about an item on that list?
Why not?
Okay, there was just a property tax settlement payment of sixty-seven hundred dollars for Robert L. B. And I believe that's an attorney. I'm just wondering what that was in relationship to?
The Williams settlement. The Williams.
Okay, that was, was that a one-time?
Yes, that's, remember the settlement that we approved for the woman who was in area?
Yes, yes.
That's the settlement.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
His office valid by common council for the week's ending September sixteen, two thousand sixteen, amount one million, one hundred twenty thousand dollars, hundred and ninety... One hundred and ninety dollars and I said, September thirteen, September sixteen, amount four hundred three thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars, thirty-one cents, authorized on the mayor's city clerk, hereby direct sign Mark Strong on City Chamberlain.
Moved by Council, uh, Kasper, second by Council Kessler. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. This is point of meeting where we invite members of the public who would like to address the council to step to the podium and share their thoughts with us. Would anyone care to address us?
Hi, my name is John Lyne, Eleven Pleasant Street, Flatburgh, New York. Got a couple of questions. Probably won't get answers, but I, uh, gonna ask them anyway. What's the current fund balance as of, as it stands now? It was a hundred and some odd thousand dollars at the end of two thousand fifteen going into your budget according to some stuff I read. Used to be six million dollars a few years ago. Where is it now? Anybody? Tell me.
John, this is not a, not town meeting style. You get to make comments to the council. It's not a, it's not a discussion.
Oh, this is, this is different than it's been for thirty years. Okay. Thank you.
Well, John, that's not correct and, uh...
I've, I've been around since nineteen eighty addressing this council.
All right. Well, address the council.
All right. Um, you voted to approve the minutes from last week's council meeting. They're wrong. Why did you vote? Why didn't you cor- correct the resolution that you made to go into executive session? Why did you lie on these meetings that that's what you said for executive session? You should have amended those minutes. That's the law. So, I don't know what kind of action you people do here, but you're supposed to follow the rules. But you don't. And I noticed that there's a new management position for the Public Works Department. Where's the money coming from? You've hired six new managers in the last two years. You guys got lots of our money. And I'm getting pretty tired of it. I know you're not gonna answer. Most of you won't return any phone calls, including you, Dale.
Uh-uh. You're out of order.
Oh, I've been out of order for a long time.
You do not make comments to anyone. You address the council in general.
I already made my comment. So, those are questions that taxpayers need to ask. Why are you passing minutes that are false? Why did you hide the fact that you violated the open meeting law last week? Corrected it when you found out that I inquired about it to the press Republican? And somebody from the press Republican must have run over to your office and said, "Hey, you know, when you, when you go into executive session, you've gotta be pretty accurate as to why you're going in to executive session." You'll have to excuse me. I'm on some new medication that's not working well. You've got this new management position on your business, but you're appointing a person this week. What's up with that? New business was supposed to be last week or the week before, now that you do every two weeks meetings. This is not a common council. This is a little dictatorship. You're not following the rules. And I'm gonna make sure that everybody in this city knows it. So, why, why did you pass those resolutions? The minutes?
Right.
Why didn't you make an amendment? So, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
I'm just kinda disgusted with the way this city has run for the last few years.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I didn't...
That's the only... Sorry, I haven't heard.
Would anyone else care to address the council?
Go ahead, I'll put it.
My name is Kathy McCleary. I live at two C V Way. Um, a comment and a question. Um, I'm not officially speaking for the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts of Troop Pact Thirty-nine, but when I was there last, a couple of the older boys mentioned that they were kind of wondering why it was such a problem with the city beach. If you know that the water in Lake Champlain is drifting to the north and follows the shoreline, you could not have picked a worse place to put the city beach. And what is, we haven't, we don't have any idea what's coming out of Skamotion Creek, but Skamotion Creek is right there, empties in, turns a corner, and goes right into the beach. Um, kind of amusing that the boys could figure this out. They were mostly concerned because what you have now throughout the city is all of the, the streets with the water collecting, emptying straight into Lake Champlain. And of course, once wherever that goes in, it drips along the shore up toward the city beach. But the question that I was specifically sent here for is in relation to these little blurbs in the paper about the Department of Public Works who are doing hydrant testing. And, and the Cub Scouts were positive that it was really supposed to be the fire department. And the boys who live, two boys who live over in the new base wanna know why nobody ever comes over and tests them. They have yet to see, and their parents have yet to see anybody doing anything at the new base, and they're kinda curious. And I know that you can't answer questions, so I won't. I'll just tell them I asked you. Thank you, all of you, for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at eighty-eight Nevada Oval, and I have less of a problem than I just heard. Uh, I came down today to talk about the two bike paths, the Terry Gordon Bike Path and the Karen Fleury Bike Path, which I'm sure you're all aware of. First, I would like to mention that it's a pleasure to see how much use the people of Flatburgh are using, utilizing both paths at present. They're well-kept and clean. There were times people have a tendency to drop off wrapper papers, et cetera, and not putting them in the available re, uh, uh, containers. Most dog walkers are picking up after their pets also, which is really great to, to let you know about. Uh, these are recreational paths for walkers, joggers, bikers, and other sports, but they are not exclusively bike racing paths. And unfortunately, when you're walking on them, sometimes bikers come by at at least twenty to twenty-five miles an hour, and they don't tell you, "I'm coming on your right or your left." And either they just miss you by this much, or they miss your dog. If your dog's not leaving, then you're walking the dogs. It makes it really dangerous for all other users. Myself, I'm an avid cyclist. I have noticed that many people, young and old, and this is another problem which I have, are not wearing helmets. And there is a helmet law in the state of New York up to age fourteen. And why it's up, just up to age fourteen? I have no idea. I personally think Flatburgh should change it, that everybody should wear a helmet, not just to age fourteen. Uh, there's no bells on their bikes, and I just put down this little, uh, thing here. No bells, no helmets, no voices. They can't tell you you're coming, like passing on your right or left in too much speed. Uh, just common courtesy. I just, uh, can't follow it. Uh, I would also like to mention that the connection between the two paths need to be better delineated on the road. Uh, they have to be white, highlight, lighted, and especially at the northern end of the Terry Gordon Path on Bridge Street and then over the railroad bridge. It's really not easily seen for bicyclists or for the cars to stay out of the way. Uh, the last thing I wanna say is that they, both paths need to be worked on for the root uplifts, where the roots push the tarmac up, 'cause it makes it dangerous for walking, for bikers, and for strollers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else care to address us? Not seeing anyone. We'll continue with our regular agenda.
For resisting each other's terms, not help or lower, and be pro-...
Let's make a motion to waive the reading.
Moving the motion, waiving the reading by Council Kessler, second by Council O'Connell. Um, discussion. Council Kasper.
Yeah, um, I just wanna make a point about the resolution itself with regard to what it is predicated on, which is the inability of the city to draw definitive conclusions about how to prevent the concentration of pathogens. We authorize Environmental Services to spend quite a bit of money, and I'm just saying on our monthly budget, a thousand dollars for September, to do really aggressive and proactive testing, daily testing. And so, I think that before we go looking for someone else's advice, we actually see what our investment has paid off and to get the data on that and to have those reports. And we were told that it was gonna take some time to create those data sets because this is a, a problem that's in flux. So, for that reason, I think that we should, uh, trust in the fabulous work that the city is doing right now out of its grave concern for the, the city beach. And let's get the data. Let's see what it says. And if there's something there, and we get a recommendation from Environmental Services that we need to reach out to some other entity or agency, then I think that's the way we should proceed.
Council Armstrong.
Um, well, that may be true, and I believe as a municipality, um, we have certain tools at our disposal, and I have no doubt whatsoever that we're employing every tool that we have in our toolbox. And, you know, unfortunately, um, there was some suggestion that this resolution was in fact a criticism of our department, which, you know, is absolutely not true, which I refuted the last time we had this discussion. Uh, in fact, what it, what it recognizes is that we have the ability to collaborate. We, and we do things much more effectively when we do that. This is ano- another, um, premise upon which this resolution is based, is that we're thinking globally and acting locally. You know, during our last discussion, uh, it came up that certainly, even though maybe perhaps not identifiable variables immediately, uh, are climate change and, and the uncertainty of how climate change is affecting our lake. Well, this is an opportunity to connect dots, to make connections, and not only solve the small problem of how all of these variables, named and unnamed, affect our beach, but how generally the beach's health is a reflection of and an outgrowth of the overall condition of the lake. You know, municipal resources are limited. That's not anything to be ashamed of. It's just a fact. And when we are com- addressing complex problems caused by many, many variables, and some of those variables may not even be within the jurisdiction of our, you know, purview, it's, it only makes sense to think of things more widely and more broadly. I just don't understand the stubbornness about this. There's no shame in promoting a really good idea. And I think I'm really proud that we have the opportunity to reach out and take advantage of resources that we don't have.
Further discussion? Council Dowell.
The duration of our contract with M-Dyne is, is it monetary or a timeframe contract?
John?
Uh, M-Dyne's the lab that's used. Right, right. Okay, uh, that's open-ended agreement. Uh, the study that's being done with C D M Smith, delivered was due, uh, I believe November first, is when we expect a report on, on the investigation. Okay, so that's just one report? They haven't been giving us reports since we go along? There's been status reports in progress meetings. But they're doing a final? Final report where they take all the data that's been collected and tell whether they've determined that, that there's correlations and other kinda stuff. It's, it's settled November, November first. Okay. And that's expected to be timely? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Council?
I was gonna bring this up in the work session, but we, we didn't have one, so, pardon me if I bleed over into other things, but I have a copy of the C D M Smith contract here. And I, I kinda wish I'd read it sooner than I did. Because I think we voted on this in April, and, uh, the mayor signed the contract, I think, April twenty-sixth. But in here, it clearly says, "The engineer," meaning C D M Smith, "will review the applicable state and U S E P A standards, then discuss the project with the state and county D O H officials to determine if the state has any pending updates to the sanitary code that could alter the bacteriological standard for bathing beaches in the future, and recommend the owner be allowed to change the bacteriological indicator to align with what is used at the state beach." So, back in April, we were willing to collaborate with the state and federal government to help us with this, with this problem, and we were willing to pay a consultant to do that for us. But now, it appears as though we're no longer willing to do that, even though it doesn't cost anything. It's, it doesn't fit. So, I would really like to see us pass this resolution to say that, in addition to what we're gonna pay the consultant to do, as I just read to you, that we can do other things as well, and collaborate with other state governments, other, our federal government, uh, perhaps even, uh, even the government of Canada would be interested in helping with this. So, it just seems kinda disingenuous that we would vote for this in April and be willing to spend a large sum of money when we all know money's a challenge this year, and now we're not. This doesn't make a bit of sense. So, if someone can explain that to me, I'd appreciate it. Otherwise, I'd encourage you to vote for this.
Council Kessler.
I don't have a, a solution or, or I guess, a, a general response, other than the fact that last week I stated that I have complete confidence in the departments, uh, in Jonathan's departments, um, you know, decades of experience. And, uh, you know, I'm not in the business to micromanage the departments and tell them who they should or shouldn't be, you know, communicating with. And I have complete faith in John that he's going to be communicating with the appropriate agencies when it's necessary and when it's appropriate. So, um, you know, I guess I, I still stand... So, you know, I guess I still stand by my decision from last week.
Council?
Yeah, Councilor, in response to your question, the very fact that the contract already noted that we are in partnership and collaboration with state agencies means we're already in collaboration with state agencies.
It means that we're in collaboration with state agencies on a very minute topic. It does, by you voting tonight against this resolution, it means that you are only willing to look at that particular minute piece of this, and it may be, and probably is, much larger than it is today. And I remember in our discussions about this, that one of our department heads said that we don't really know what the problem is, and chances are, we will never know. But we're going to go ahead and do this study anyway. So if that's the case, why aren't we drawing on all the resources that we have? You know, there are probably hundreds of people out there who know what is wrong with our lake and can help us with it. And I just think we should reach out to those people.
I generally try to reserve my comments till the end of discussion, but I think I want to jump in at this point. One of the things, there's an assumption that we're not making progress, there's an assumption that we're not defining issues. But the thing that bothers me most about this, and I want to talk about that first, is the very wording of the resolution assumes that we have unhealthy levels of E. coli. Unhealthy. We've never had a health result. Have we had E. coli measurements above the level for bathing? Yes, but you know how that works.
Okay.
If we work on Monday, if we take a water sample on Monday, and by the time it's evaluated, it's Tuesday, and we find out, oh, my gosh, the water was bad yesterday, we'll be closed on Tuesday right now. We were still open on Monday, we never had any health issues based on that. So including unhealthy in the opening line of this bothers me considerably, but not quite as much as the last word of it, where we talk about actual beach pollution.
Again, an assumption that there's actual pollution here.
Really some pretty high-powered and prejudicial words in a resolution. So at first reading, those are the things that I was most upset about, really making assumptions without having, not only not having seen the scientific data, not even asking for it. I mean, you know, is there some preliminary data? Yeah, not very conclusive stuff, we've got to wait and see what the engineers have to say about it. But you didn't even ask for the data before you drafted this.
Excuse me?
Oh, no, I have the floor, and I will keep the floor until I recognize the second, the next person. But saying that it is unhealthy and subject to pollution without having asked for the scientific data is offensive. Now, Council O'Connell has not spoken yet, or we'll say that he gets to speak before someone gets a second quack, so.
Thank you, thank you. As we all well know, if I go back to a previous statement in the open session, we don't have a choice where the beach is, it's just there. I mean, we can't move it, and we didn't have the decision to do that. But the main thing I want to stress is, and one of my colleagues said, if it's a really good idea to do it, why don't we do it? Well, I just don't think it's a good idea. It's as simple as that. We have things that are going on, we have our departments working. We don't need to just pass resolutions to make a resolution to pass a resolution. And that's what we've done a lot in the last three years. There are a lot more important things I think we need to look at. I think this is an important issue. But to get into this discussion or sending a letter, what, I just questioned the intent of the letter. And I am always one to speak from how I feel, but I just questioned the intent and where it's all coming from. And I have a problem with that. And I'm not going to support sending this, I'm going to bolt this down, hands down. That's how I feel. So nobody can change how I feel.
That's fine.
Council Ruff.
Yeah, well, it's interesting, because I've put forward similar resolutions in my history that have to do with issues that are larger than what we generally deal with here. And Michael Kelly has done the same thing. The difference this time is that I didn't get any feedback or any suggestion. There was no collegiality regarding the wording or whether any wording might be changed, as there has been in the past. Number two, to suggest that no investigation into the testing that's been done is simply incorrect. I have been privy to all of the reports that have been done. I have met with John Ruff. In fact, John Ruff began his comments last time we were together when he was asked, what do you think, John, and what has been the extent of our work? And I took in every bit of what he said, and I was impressed. But he started out by saying, well, if we got money, that would be nice. What is wrong with the idea that you can reach out in a formal way, as we have with the Oil Train Task Force, to bring attention to a problem? Now, unfortunately, Council O'Connell is not here to hear my question, and I hope he can clarify what he means, but to suggest that there was some kind of intent, okay, I'll get to ask him. Yeah, the last part of what I wanted to say was, Paul, I don't, you're implying that there's some kind of intent that's not...
No, I'm not, I'm just telling you how I feel.
No, I know, but you said, you questioned the intent.
But that will be a no-vote, won't it, if I'm not here? At least my intentions are. Or I have medical emergency.
Okay, sorry about that, Paul. So I guess I won't know what he thinks the intent is. My intent is clearly stated, and I am perfectly willing to amend any perceived inaccuracies in this. I think the spirit of this resolution is clear. And I would agree to, you know, make it more accurate if necessary in order to get it passed. That was just, you know, something that done in isolation, one might overlook certain points.
I would, I think, beyond the comments that I made already, my concerns really, my remaining concerns are that it seems like nothing but a symbolic action. Ultimately, we will come back, probably very shortly, with a grant application for funds to support future testing. That's an action. We'll have, you know, specific recommendations from the engineers, those are actions. I guess, my thought is that our resolutions ought to be more about actions and less about image, I guess. So I'm not sure that polishing this up makes it any more palatable for me.
Well, I'd just like to say then, and, you know, of course, you may have further comments to make, but I'll stop by saying, when the Oil Train Task Force sent out its letters from many towns all over the county, we sent them to officials at the federal and state That might have been symbolic, but it was in fact a very clear statement and a plea for advocacy. Those folks are there to represent us, and if we do not express our need, you know, clearly, then we haven't done our job, I don't think.
And I think that, I have to say that I agree with you, and very much so on one particular word that you used, clearly. This is a shotgun. I think we should be much more clear in what we're asking our representatives to do. If we have a specific federal source, for example, that they can help us walk through, great. If they, if we weren't already in contact with the USGS and other federal agencies, I might ask them for the entree. That's what I'm saying about something specific. General ask in this point just doesn't seem as valuable. Even, you know, the Oil Train example is a little bit different example in that, you know, clearly that was something that the federal government regulates, and those were the people who could affect the regulators. That could be both a very specific and a very general ask, because we have no ability to affect what the railroad does at all. And so that's a great thing to do. Obviously, the impact of that at the state level has been very helpful. The governor's done all that he can do, again, since he doesn't get to regulate the trains as well. I think train safety's improved, not good enough yet, obviously, and I think we have a lot more to go. But I think those were some specific things. I think this is just way too general and doesn't, to me, have a point. And it just is not something that I really favor.
Is there thoughts waiting for the November first findings to include that?
I think...
Based upon our findings of, can we have help with this?
If, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways to express that, there could be some very specific examples. If, for example, you know, the source was, I don't know, pick something. Well, we ran cameras through all of our sewers, we know our sewers are clear, there aren't any leaks, so, but if this, if one of the things was that we found a whole bunch of broken sewers and we needed help fixing them, that's a great, that's a great ask. But that's one department we might go to. If the problem is that we have too many birds in our lake that are, you know, putting their fecal matter into the lake, well, that's a different federal department that would deal with that. If the problem is, you know, if you start to look at a much more specific ask once we have more data, I think you're right. I think that's the time to do this. That's my opinion.
And I'll ask, a few years ago, there was an occasion, they tried to make the lake the next Great Lake for purposes of clean, I think it lasted like forty-three minutes or something, I'm not sure, but it was very short-lived. Was that targeted to a specific clean line, like phosphorus, or was it just targeted for the whole lake?
It was a specific funding source that could only go to Great Lakes, and what they did is they refused to name Lake Champlain a Great Lake, but they did allow the lake to access that funding source. So it was, no, you can't have the name, but you can access the money. And I don't remember the specific purpose, but that was the, that was the outcome of that.
So there wasn't any access?
For whatever that particular purpose was. And we have identified some potential sources for continuing testing at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
That that was federal money? Let me just...
That one was definitely, yes, yes. International waters are federally regulated, so interstate ones too.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
No.
Council Casper?
No.
Council Cretzer?
No.
Resolving importance with request therefore, common council approves Northern Country Most Any Help to Hold Their Annual Offboard Show on the US Oval Sunday at July 30, 2017. Request electricity, use of the city trailer stage, and pets will be erected. Certificate of Insurance and Dings Amendment will be required.
Moved by Council Casper, second by Council Dowdell. Discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Council Casper?
Yes.
Council Cretzer?
Yes.
Resolve importance with request therefore, common council approves MLD to write off on page five bills from June 30, 2015, June 30, 2015, in total amount of $6,162.09. Sentence of write-off to the security is 0.62%.
Moved by Council Armstrong, second by Council Kelly. Discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Council Casper?
Yes.
Council Cretzer?
Yes.
Resolve importance with request therefore, the common council approves Phase Three, the North Country Co-op CFA project, including exterior, beside work and remaining interior renovation to be ordered in handy, Dan Deserol, for the total base amount of $146,120 and[1466.82][1466.82]$153,520, total with alternates.
Moved by Council Kelly, second by Council Cretzer. Discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Council Casper?
Yes.
Council Cretzer?
Yes.
Resolve importance with request therefore, the common council approves MLD to write off on page five bills from June 30, 2015, June 30, 2015, in total amount of $6,162.09. Sentence of write-off to the security is 0.62%.
Moved by Council Armstrong, second by Council Kelly. Discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Council Casper?
Yes.
Council Cretzer?
Yes.
Resolve importance with request therefore, the common council approves the city Champlin Champs for $53,700 from the water, from the sewer, from the water pollution control plant budget, from various line items containing a budget surplus to various line items to cover unbudgeted cost areas for chemicals, contact services, temporary payroll, and parking supplies.
Moved by Council Dowdell, second by Council Casper. Discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Council Casper?
Yes.
Council Cretzer?
Yes.
Resolve importance with request therefore, the common council approves Phase Three, the North Country Co-op CFA project, including exterior, beside work and remaining interior renovation to be ordered in handy, Dan Deserol, for the total base amount of $146,120 and[1517.82][1517.82]$153,520, total with alternates.
Moved by Council Kelly, second by Council Cretzer. Discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Council Casper?
Yes.
Council Cretzer?
Yes.
Resolve importance with request therefore, the common council approves Phase Three, the North Country Co-op CFA project, including exterior, beside work and remaining interior renovation to be ordered in handy, Dan Deserol, for the total base amount of $146,120 and $153,520, total with alternates.
Moved by Council Kelly, second by Council Cretzer. Discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Council Casper?
Yes.
Council Cretzer?
Yes.
Resolve importance with request therefore, the common council approves Phase Three, the North Country Co-op CFA project, including exterior, beside work and remaining interior renovation to be ordered in handy, Dan Deserol, for the total base amount of $146,120 and $153,520, total with alternates.
Moved by Council Kelly, second by Council Cretzer. Discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Council Casper?
Yes.
Council Cretzer?
Yes.
Resolve importance with request therefore, the common council approves Phase Three, the North Country Co-op CFA project, including exterior, beside work and remaining interior renovation to be ordered in handy, Dan Deserol, for the total base amount of $146,120 and $153,520, total with alternates.
Moved by Council Kelly, second by Council Cretzer. Discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Sorry, Council Kelly, or Casper?
Yes.
Council Cretzer?
Yes.
Resolve importance with request therefore, the common council approves the execution of the agreement with solid engineering in the amount of $28,370 for the alternative analysis and conceptual design, spillway equipment, and even more, Dan. Funding is from capital project 88320.68.
Moved by Council Armstrong, second by Council Dowdell. Discussion? Council Kelly?
Again, I was going to bring this up in the work session, but we didn't have one, so I'm going to ask some pretty detailed questions of John, if that's okay. This, if I understand this, John, and they gave an excellent project description and background, so that helped me understand it. But if I understand this correctly, we were told that we had to build a new spillway. Is that, is that true? And the recommended spillway was something called a labyrinth spillway? Is that...
Yeah, going back a number of years, the spillway coming down from the, the spillway chute coming down from the dam spillway has to...
John, it would help a lot if you'd come over here so the folks at home could understand what you were saying. Well, assuming they could hear you say, either one of them is down.
All right, so the dam holds the water back into the reservoir. There's a spillway that allows water out when the reservoir level starts to rise to keep the dam from overtopping. And when the water comes down that spillway, there's a long chute, I don't know, 150 to 100 feet long, that eventually carries it to a stream. So that chute has been deteriorating over the years. We've been making repairs and doing maintenance on it and all that kind of stuff. I don't know, four or five years ago, we actually needed a design to replace that chute, and part of the design also included upgrading the spillway itself to this labyrinth weir that you're talking about. That was put out to bid, the bids came in at like seven million dollars, and we decided that, well, number one is way more than we were expecting. Number two, we were thinking that there, hopefully, is a lot less expensive way to do this, and we were also wondering, all right, are we really staying with this existing system in the long run? So the bids were rejected, and we got on an inspection schedule that the DEC approved, where every three months, our engineer comes out, looks at that spillway chute, and analyzes whether it's changed and whether or not additional maintenance is needed. And from time to time, they say, yeah, here's some things you need to do, and we do that, and we do those things. I'm not, was that your question?
Well, it's sort of a series of, a series of events that happened, and you certainly got us almost up to speed, but I think that what we are proposing here is to, is to do a much less expensive type of repair than was initially suggested. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And then spending this 28,000-some-odd dollars to do this will probably save us millions in the long run. Is that, is that a correct statement?
That's what we're hoping.
John, okay. Okay, well, I think that's good. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
That's what we're hoping.
John, okay. Okay, well, I think that's good. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Roll call?
Counsel Armstrong?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dallow?
Yes.
Counsel Casper?
Yes.
Counsel Kretser?
Yes.
Resolve in accordance with request therefore the common council approves a police department employee to attend Southeastern Homicide Investigator Association two thousand sixteen annual conference from October ninth through fourteenth two thousand sixteen, at a cost not to exceed one thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents, and will be expensed out of the asset forfeiture fund.
Moved by Counsel Casper, second by Counsel Dallow. Discussion? Counsel Kelly?
It's just, uh, prompted me to ask the chief, since he's here, how many homicides have we had in our city in the last five years?
Specifically for homicide, there's been a few in the last five years. But to make a point that there are numerous death investigations that we do. Since the first of the year, we've probably had twenty-five death investigations that we do. You know, everything from heroin overdoses have to be investigated as a fatality to finding somebody, you know, dead in their home who is an elderly person gets investigated as a, as a, as a crime until we know that the person dies of natural causes.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Counsel Armstrong?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dallow?
Yes.
Counsel Casper?
Yes.
Counsel Kretser?
Yes.
Resolve in accordance with request therefore the common council approves city engineer Kevin Farrington to attend North Country Stormwater Trade Showroom Conference on October twentieth two thousand sixteen, and that's paid by the state three hundred and seventy-five dollars. The training will counsel for continuing to pay some credits as required by the mayor of state for professional engineers.
Moved by Counsel, uh, Casper, second by Counsel Dallow. Discussion? Roll call?
Counsel Armstrong?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dallow?
Yes.
Counsel Casper?
Yes.
Counsel Kretser?
Yes.
Resolve in accordance with request therefore the common council approves two police department employees to attend the Northern Department in law enforcement, set an annual training conference from October twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth two thousand sixteen, at a cost not to exceed nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, and will be expensed out of the asset forfeiture fund.
Moved by Counsel Dallow, second by Counsel Kretser. Discussion? Roll call?
Counsel Armstrong?
Yes.
Counsel Kelly?
Yes.
Counsel Dallow?
Yes.
Counsel Casper?
Yes.
Counsel Kretser? Yes. We have two resolutions out for initial consideration. The, and the media copy of the agenda were in the body of the meeting, but, uh, really feel that they require, uh, much more discussion. Uh, relates to the conversations we've had here a number of times about, um, you know, the reason we authorized our relationship with payscale was really trying to come to some comprehensive answers on how to, uh, deal with manager benefits. Also, part of the, the general theme that we've been trying to build, uh, succession plans and some management teams. Uh, they are requests from the mayor to, for the common council to place a title, a new title of office manager on range six of the management payscale. And the second was to hand down an appointment of, uh, Christie Doolittle to office manager in the Department of Public Works, uh, at step nine of that range, uh, at a salary of sixty-two, eight, sixty. Uh, would like to see if we could get some discussion on this at our work session next week, and if that's all right with everyone. Um, does anyone have anything else they would like to put on for initial? Does anyone have any new business they would like to discuss? Counsel Dallow?
Yes, uh, just maybe go to Mr. Brody. The, uh, Air Force representative that's coming to look at the FB one eleven, is that individual coming? Coming this?
This month.
This month?
It's supposed to be the middle one, what you called it. It's coming through the other one.
Okay.
Flying to fly in, there's, there's the inspection thing.
Right, and it's gonna be just the one eleven, is that correct?
No.
It is both, okay. All right, and, uh, Mr. Nichols, have you-
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Yes, I've been contacted by people that are very interested in being there when we-
Okay.
Right.
They have asked.
Okay, and where's this individual coming from to be?
I don't- Counsel Kelly.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Counsel Kelly?
I'd like to go back to the, uh, contract we signed, or we agreed to in April for the, uh, water beach quality study, and, uh, I have a few questions for John on this, if, if you don't mind, John. Uh, let's see, the first, I don't know, first eleven pages are boilerplate, but it gets into the meat of it, starting with exhibit A, and there, there were four phases to this, four tasks, they call it, John. What, how many of those have been done?
I don't have it in front of me.
Oh.
Exact tasks.
Okay.
Weird.
Take mine.
No, 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 you're not on a jury stamp. Task, okay, uh, task one, analyze existing data and develop future sampling plan. Existing data has been analyzed, and the future sampling plan has been drafted. We're expecting that to be finalized in this report. We're expecting at the end of next month.
Okay. Have we given them any money yet, John?
Uh, we've not been billed yet.
Okay.
Our second task is, uh, to develop a work plan to investigate the potential sources of contamination. Uh, basically, that, that's been completed, and we've been in the process of, of executing that work plan. Uh, develop an environmental conditions monitoring plan, uh, that's been done also. That's task three. Uh, task four is establish a bacteriological criteria for beach use. You touched on this earlier about, uh, whether we're gonna use a different fecal indicating bacteria litter. Uh, and we did request the health department to be able to switch from enterococci to E. coli. Uh, they approved that request at the beginning of the bathing season, uh, with the caveat that we keep monitoring for enterococci, but we use E. coli for the compliance determination about whether the beach was open or not. So basically, that's been done. So, for the most part, uh, the work's done, the data's being, going through its final compilation and analysis, and the report's being read.
They, uh, they promised, I believe that, the beginning or the end of task one, to have a report. Have they delivered that yet?
Uh, which-
Let's see, summarize the results of our literature review and discussions in a memorandum to the owner. This work will be executed in parallel with the sampling program being developed. Have they delivered?
Yes, they've issued two, what we call, technical memorandums so far. I think one was maybe in June and the other in July, that addressed the initial data analysis, uh, followed by a, a, a second set of data analysis, uh, with recommendations for how we basically consolidate the three monitoring programs that we've been doing into a, a smaller, more efficient, less costly monitoring program.
Do, do you think these reports are too technical for us laypersons to understand?
If I can understand them, I'm sure you can understand them.
Would you be willing to share those?
Sure.
Was that okay with you guys?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
John, thank you very much. I, I mean to put you on the spot, but it's a, you know, it's a, it's a really important thing, and, uh, we wanna make sure we're getting our money's worth also. So if you're satisfied, I'm satisfied.
Sounds good, thank you.
Counsel Armstrong?
Yeah, a couple of questions about, um, number one, I guess. Uh, we had said that the charter commission, or the charter proposal would be, uh, there would be informational sessions, and I just wondered if there were any updates on that.
There are. Um, actually, Rod Sherman has taken the lead on getting this together. He's been working with, uh, um, Bill Drew pretty actively. Uh, they plan to get as many of the commission members as they can together in a matter of a couple of days. Uh, he has prepared, uh, a document that very clearly shows the changes, that will go up on our website, uh, the first of next week, uh, so that you can, one, someone can go through there, and it's, it, it's, you know, using track changes in Word, it's great to see.
Right.
It's well done, he's put a couple of comments in there. Uh, they're prepared to have information sessions, and, uh, yeah, they're, they're doing a pretty good job with it right now.
Okay, thank you. And hopefully, we'll get a big press coverage on it.
That's right.
Yep, that'd be great.
Ted, Joe?
Uh, then, also, I just wondered where we are in terms of, uh, planning for the, um, fund balance policy, and how that'll fit into the, the whole budgetary review that we do once you produce yours. So, we've got a policy, and what are the plans to implement, and I just need to be updated?
Good question. I don't know that there is, you know-
Okay, so we'll work on it.
I think it's all, I, I, my assumption is that we would kinda roll it all out in, in, in the budget discussion, getting a really good sense for, you know, where we are.
Right.
Uh, you know, kinda get a sense. Our sense of urgency, I guess, is, is somewhat related to, uh, you know, what our condition will be.
Mm-hmm.
And then, really, as, we all know that our fund balance is probably lower than we'd like it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm pretty sure it's not gonna be back where we want it at the end of this year. Uh, but that, then, if it's, if it's a long way off, that's one set of activities we may wanna take. If it's not so bad, then, you know, there's some other issues. So I, I, my impression was that we were gonna kinda roll that all into one and-
Okay.
-get a much better sense of where we are and what our future looks like.
But, you know, I mean, in a sense, it, it feels like we're, we've got a goal that we don't wanna be, I know it'll take some time, and it's a process, it's not like we can be perfect all at once, but it seems like there's a way to, to, you know, kind of make that goal fairly concrete ahead of time and try to reach it, rather than just see how everything plays out and adjust to, to that, in that fashion. Does that make sense?
Maybe, maybe, some.
Yeah.
But, but I think we're, we're probably, I, I think we're probably just thinking a couple of different things. Uh, you know, we've already set a goal, we wanna get to five percent fund balance.
Right.
Uh, the thing we haven't determined is how quickly. And that seems to be, and, and how much of that do we want to do this year?
Okay.
You know, and, and those things, I think, uh, really, a lot depend on what sixteen looks like to some extent. You know, did we already make some progress back?
Right.
Wouldn't that be nice? Uh, you know, the, obviously, the other factors that are out there is, I think that you really do need to see, um, my draft budget in order to really get a sense for the seriousness of the decisions that it takes to get back in, and so that's, that's kinda the, the reason I think that it's, it's sort of just a couple weeks too early.
Okay.
But only a couple weeks, I really think.
Yeah, right. Are you gonna publish it by the first?
No.
Oh, that's right.
The Charter, the Charter Commission did me a favor, I don't have to publish it till the eighth.
Yeah, okay.
But, uh, we'll make the eighth. I've got, uh, many, most of the department requests are in, um, and, uh, I reviewed, uh, I, I started reviewing the, the easiest ones first.
Mm-hmm, of course.
And, uh, most of those have been reviewed. Uh, Richard is still working on a few-
Like the library.
... revenue items that need to be adjusted. Uh, you know, there's, the things that we don't control. Uh, for example, he's asked the, the county treasurer's office for what's their sales tax excellence for next year. They've been really good, their estimate's been great, so we, we usually don't want you with those. The one year we did was a mistake. Uh, so, um, we've got, uh, our analysis for our state aid, um, and so we're starting to get it together, and, and we should see it in a couple of weeks, and we'll have a really good picture of, of where we are. Um, I had indicated earlier that we do have the, uh, the computation for what our allowable, uh, levy growth is.
Mm-hmm.
Just over a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, and include both the tax cap figure of point zero zero six eight, and our growth factor, which was, our growth factor has to be a little smaller than it was last year.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, it'll be, uh, it'll be fairly tight, but between the two, it was a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And, uh, obviously, there's, you know, a lot of other decisions, uh, that will affect what the budget really looks like, uh, some of the stuff, uh, going forward. But it should all get a whole lot clearer in two weeks, and I think we'll, we'll be spending the next couple of months really digging in with deeply, including lots of fund balance analysis.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Counsel Kelly?
Just, I just wanna mention very quickly that, uh, I believe it was two Mondays ago, I got a, uh, an email from a Jason Rivera who lives on Steltzer Road, and, uh, he, he said that the, uh, the intersection of Goth Street and Steltzer Road, the Saranac River Trail section there is, is very dangerous. He said, children play there, and, uh, he said people were parking on the, uh, on the trail. Uh, and I contacted Mike Brody and, uh, and Kevin Farrington about that, and by Thursday, they had a solution and had it done. So, there is one happy, happy resident on Steltzer Road now. So, Brody and Basat and Farrington, thank you so much for working together and getting that done very quickly. Uh, as I said, you have one happy customer there on Steltzer Road now, so, thank you.
Thank you. I do have an item for initial consideration, I mean, for a new business.
We need to find some language, but use the language.
Okay.
We don't want to give them a good price.
I have it on there.
You have some reference to your, your percentage, and then cut off the end, which will be a lot of those.
Yeah. So, um, this is obviously one that wasn't quite prepared. Um, uh, what we discussed in our executive session was a, a potential settlement of a tax case with CVPH, and I would ask your indulgence to move that, uh, I, I guess, first of all, ask you, uh, here, uh, for a, a, phew, a resolution to implement rule four, so we could bring this up tonight. Moved by Counsel Kretser, second by Counsel Dallow. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, all right. So, I'm gonna stumble through this, and Dean will correct me when I screw it up. Uh, resolve that the Plattsburgh Common Council hereby approves the proposed settlement of the real property assessment cases filed by CVPH for the years two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and sixteen, resulting in a refund of six thousand one hundred and for the years 2015 through 2016, resulting in a refund of $6,173.68. Move by Council Casper, second by Council Dowdell. Discussion?
I was just gonna say that, just to reassure the public, we had some comments from the tax assessor and a description of how this came about. It's a long meeting. I won't try to recount that, but I was fully satisfied that this was a reasonable settlement.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Council Armstrong?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Council Casper?
Yes.
Council Kretser?
Yes.
Is there any other new business? And this is the second meeting where we invite any members of the public who would like to address the council to step forward and share their comments with us. Would anyone care to address us?
I have a comment, but I don't need the microphone. But as of noon today, I was not able to find the agenda for today's meeting on the city website. So my request is that in the future, last one was listed was September 8th, two weeks ago. So that in the future, you may give us a couple of days because some, if we're trying to learn about what's happening in the city, we need sometimes a little time. And I found the council members willing to answer questions if I could ask them.
My, my apologies. I suspect that the problem is that my assistant is out unexpectedly and we didn't make arrangements to fix that. We'll take care of it, certainly. Yep, yep, that's, that's a, a very correctable error. My apologies.
Okay, again, I'm Kathy McLeary, and in defense of Rochelle, may I give you three words? Lake Champlain Initiative. It was a pact signed by Canada and the United States just within this last decade or so, that there would be a limited amount, in fact, you're not allowed to pollute Lake Champlain. Cause that water goes straight up north into the Richelieu River and becomes the drinking water for Quebec. So the feds say, stop the polluting, and if they're not gonna help you pay, who is? So really, Rochelle, you're on, as far as I'm concerned, yeah, make them pay. They signed the contract, they didn't ask us.
Any other comments? Chief?
I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the Plattsburgh Republican for the articles they've done recently about the heroin epidemic and the crisis that we're facing. It's tough for the police department to kinda get that information out there because we deal with the aftermath, the crimes associated with it. So the article has certainly brought a lot of attention and we've been, shoot, we've been basically yielding a lot of phone calls with questions. And it's opened up some doors for us to meet with some collaborators and come up with some new ideas. So again, I wanna publicly thank them.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to address us? And before asking for a motion to adjourn, I'd like to ask the council's indulgence to go back to new business for just a moment, without objection. One of the things that's, that's been going on here, that's in, in Plattsburgh, that's really remarkable, I think, is the SUNY Plattsburgh Canadian Studies Program. You know, we've had lots of conversations about our relationship with Canada, and they have a particular, a particularly important event coming up. And I could read you this whole proclamation that they'd like us to authorize, but perhaps just the, the resolved, if you would consider it. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the common council of the city of Plattsburgh, do hereby recognize the accomplishments of the Center for the Study of Canada and the Canadian Studies Academic Program at SUNY Plattsburgh on its 50th anniversary. In witness whereof, I will then set my hand, causing the official seal of the city of Plattsburgh to be affixed.
Do you need rule four?
I would need rule four.
I will invoke rule four?
Motion to move rule four, second by Council Kelly. All in favor of invoking rule four?
Aye.
All in favor of authorizing the proclamation?
Aye.
Take the shortcut, alright. What? Oh, yes. Also, what was the date we picked on? Friday. Twenty-sixth?
Yes, it is.
It is the twenty-sixth?
Let me check on that.
Chief, I got this shut off, it won't do that. It was broken. Paul, I'm gonna, I'm gonna set a public, a public meeting, a public input meeting. Paul, you wanna describe what the, what the, what the reason for it is?
Yeah, the state of New York has a grant fund, it's program for state development called Restore New York. It's to help cities take care of properties and things that were either abandoned or vacant. And so the city is going to put an application in to remove the highway oil building, helps pay for approximately 90% of that if we're successful. And we were, we're gonna be looking for public to put on, on that application.
So it's not, it's not a public hearing that requires the council to attend? It requires, obviously, Paul, Paul and I will be there. And I would like to, to set that public hearing for 4:00 PM on Friday, September 26th, in this room.
Should we?
Should we put that into the minutes? Now, having corrected both of those errors, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. By Council Kretser, second by Council Dowdell. Roll call on adjournment?
Yes.
Council Kelly?
Yes.
Council Dowdell?
Yes.
Council Casper?
Yes.
Yes.
Stand adjourned, yes. Well, it's not the twenty-sixth, then.
September?
Twenty-seventh? It's the thirtieth? It's the thirtieth. Joe? Ted, it's the thirtieth, not the twenty-sixth.
Oh, boy. It's not the twenty-sixth.
It's the thirtieth. Keep your pen, I don't want you sticking.
The public hearing about what Paul said about highway oil.